You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order. We are being recorded, but we're not going live yet, so it'll catch up.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes for May 22nd, regular meeting.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Make a motion that we accept amendments for May 22nd, non-public meeting, one and two.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion made and seconded, anything further, Michael? Nope. All in favor say aye. Aye. Public input. Anything online yet for public input?
Nobody.
Creation Director Ash McCross, usage of Richardson Park.
Yes, so we had some people who have Airbnbs in Swansea that recently reached out and were interested in promoting that they can access the beach with their stay at their Airbnb and things like that. Currently does not have anything added in the boarding of it. We have things in hotels, which are just a total of three that we have in Swansea right now. One of them being that store. I also have put away campgrounds previously, just because I also was in it. The whole campground swimming area, water, water next to it. The other also has an access to a swimming area. Kind of here to get opinions and feedbacks, because it would be the potential non-residents coming in to use the space and just more of an understanding that it could make it harder then to deal with them, because they're only a commercial for your time.
What does that make it harder to deal with?
Well, just like, so say one weekend something else comes in and is completely disruptive to the property, and we ask them to leave, well, they've gone back home. That's what stops somebody else from coming in and just continually being a different people every other weekend or things like that in an ongoing issue.
An average nice day in the summer, you're already pretty crowded then?
We are very crowded already, yeah. Actually, tonight, when I left close at 3:00 this afternoon, we were very well packed this evening. It's warm weather, it's got a lot of people down there early.
What's your preference?
My personal preference is that we don't open this, just because it could potentially then turn into what could be one Airbnb at a time to 10, 20 Airbnb, Airbnb's in the town. That we bring in multiple different people across the board and just mandating the regulations with them and again dealing with them, this like potential of... Could somebody just say, "Oh, I will keep my card in the Airbnb for the weekend, so I can go big party down at Richardson Park, people staying there, I want to invite all my guests down."
But could this anything happen if they were staying at one of the inns?
They could. We only had about one couple come down and they came through the bridges in, and they came down like fully versed in rules. Like they were told that they had like a pamphlet at breakfast and that laid out like, "Well, here's beach, here are the regulations, here's what you need to say when you're arriving." And they did a really great job with that. If Airbnb's are interested in doing something along the way with that, I guess, I would understand what that could tie into the same area of things. I'm just worried again at the impact of the volume right now. There's like three hotels in, I foresee us obtaining more of those currently in town, but we could obtain quite a few Airbnb's or the other, like other options, the furboes and things like that nature.
What are your thoughts on like Marlborough as a stone pond? I think they have residence sticker or permit.
They do, they have a beach pass, you go pick them up at the town hall. We right now allow the permits for sticker stations as to come through, along with just checking people's general, like, "Are you a Swansea resident?" People who are residents or whatever, "Here's my ID." People who aren't, we'd be like, "Why are you asking?" We kind of get that little bit involved, and I'm like, "Oh."
How do you do that? When you're down there, basically, people show up, they walk down, and you just... Oh, they don't look familiar, or will then ask them?
Nope, we have a lovely little lady who sits at the gate.
Right at the gate?
Yep.
And she's there all the time?
Um, most of the time. So they're going to be there during the weekdays. We're still trying to finalize somebody for the weekend, but we also rotate light cards around, so when I have three cards on, two will sit down on the water and one will go up and set up the gate, along with camp stout, camp stout will gladly, like when I'm out there, I will go through there, yes, they come down.
All right, and the campgrounds that we do have here, they all have their own beaches?
Yep, because it's just Swansea Lake and then Asher River.
Yeah, so they both have their own beaches?
Yeah.
Well, actually, that's the river, right?
Yeah, it's technically the river, but it's...
Kind of a beach area.
We'll never be technical to that.
I couldn't understand saying no to that, because they have their own beach, it's not like the drug, but it would be a nice bonus for these Airbnb's, a few that we have to, for the owners to be able to option, you know, to offer that.
We're getting more.
We are getting more, or that?
Some people buy investment properties.
And we'll get the impact of all the potential apartment buildings coming in as well. And do you foresee us seeing a large increase to some volumes of people that are going to be using it with all the apartment buildings, especially opening next year? And it does get very crowded down in there some days. We've seen about 100,000 people there on hawkeye ends, and it's not a horribly big beach. It's not a horribly big beach, when you've got 160 bodies down on there, little kids. Yes.
Stick with current policy and see if it becomes a bigger demand and how we fare with the new housing movements, or?
I'd say that definitely right now, we're going to see with the new housing units. Not hardly a couple of these types, don't want to perceive too many of them coming in.
Send them down to all of it.
Keep the policy the same.
Oh, we do have a policy, yeah, but I almost didn't hear what it is.
Yeah, right now it reads that, "Swansea residents, Swansea tactically owners, employees of the town of Swansea, and guests staying in the inns and hotels in the town of Swansea, and others approved by headquarters."
Is consensus? agree with that? Thank you.
No sign to change.
Kathleen Fraser, Weatherhill Road.
We're okay here?
Yeah, if you like, unless you want to put the microphone, you're welcome.
Do we, from the last meeting where we attended with the attorney Bentley, some different ideas were put forth, anybody come up with a plan? Kathy has someone buying her house this week. Before we started all this, her house was not under contract, and I was worried about the history. But now, you know, we're kind of in that situation where we may or may not need to share with the new people what's been going on, what the plan is. We'd like to be able to give them a plan.
Give the new people the plans?
Yes.
That are moving in?
Yes.
I, do you mind if I speak for my own, before I think? I walked the street the other day, I went there and I walked it, you know, and Joe expressed towards a lot of his concerns on it too, and personally, to me, I don't know where and how the taxpayers of Swansea could afford to do a construction thing there, and to me, there's not enough of a space to put a rail. I just find it larger than we can tackle, I really do, I just, it's a big thing. It's going to need a big retaining, which are millions of dollars, am I right too if I say that?
Yeah, when it's current form, to expand that out, to be able to put a guardrail in there, it'd take a significant amount of construction, and there isn't room. The construction of the road is stable, it's all granite, rock and such, it's not going anywhere, but there's no way to take a ground pounder and put guardrails in. I know, I, so I think I spoke to you, meet your first we spoke on, on the phone. Like, a lot of these houses, if you were going to put them in that area, you wouldn't be able to build on the, on the particular little locks there. So, I've looked at it, and like I said, I respect your opinion, I don't have as much concern about it as you do. I would be more concerned about somebody on South Road, a drunk driver coming off of South Road in the little room in the home than somebody coming off the back, just due to the volume of traffic, the speed of the traffic, and the corner on the road. There's nothing that really can be done in its current form, and to look at potentially making that a one-way traffic, we take, we take a public meeting, public input, any time that we've looked into making a road a one-way road, the public has been absolutely dead against it. So that is like the only reasonable thing, if there was support for it, but it'd be quite the process to have it happen. But in its current form, I know you mentioned laying rocks out there or something, rocks are just going to hit by the car and go down the hill and hit the house. The other issue with making it a one-way is snow removal, there's not like an area up there to turn around, so trucks would have to back down, and then the other issue with making it a one-way, those intersections on, on the other two roads, not ideal at best, so when you will, you will turn that into a one-way or eliminate completely for through traffic, now those intersections are getting more traffic, so.
We tried it, you're right.
Yeah.
But we came down thinking we made it one-way, and then I took my truck, we took the turn, it was a little difficult. We've done all the different things.
Well, it's tricky.
Yeah.
Doors and...
So that is, that is problematic as well, and like I said, there are houses that, you leave here on Eden Road, there's a house that's three feet off the side of Eden Road, literally right there, so it's, it's not like that is the only house with a concern, it's the way they would know years ago. If there was an easy solution for it, I would be willing to do it for you, but there really isn't.
Yeah, by no means, I would love to sit here and say, "First at the wall, but..." But that's the greatest thing that could happen, but how do you, that's a tough decision, you know, how do you do it?
I would worry trying to put a guard, like, you know, you drive around town, you see the wooden posts they put in the ground years ago, those don't do it, they just snap off if a car, if a car hits it.
Well, that's what's there now.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not concerned with the road being, being stable, but there's no way to go in there right now and do something and risk destabilizing the slope, and just looking at the granite and the rock, you're not going to be able to drive anything around.
The granite's right there, I look at it, you see it sticking right out.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only one little spot that it's starting to, I don't see it going with the growth that's in there. If we took that growth out and the trees, it would collapse, you know, but that's...
The trees are all healthy, and like I said, to the layperson to look at it, it is obviously more troubling because of the elevation and the slope in the backyard, but you take the volume of traffic coming on South Road versus that, and I have a pretty substantial law enforcement background, you have a greater chance of somebody striking your house on South Road than you do on that road.
But there's also the boulders that are down in back of the house that all come...
They've been down there for a long time, we've been keeping an eye on it.
I've been keeping an eye on it, we've had some huge ones just recently come down.
When, what are you saying just recently?
Um, probably four, six months ago.
Ever since the truck on the side, you've been keeping an eye on it, I haven't seen anything move.
Yep, because I, previous tenants had put like a garden and stuff, and now there's a big rock in front of it.
You say big, you're talking like...
No, I'm talking big.
Because I haven't seen anything displaced on that.
Okay.
Like I said, it's a, it's an unfortunate situation, it just, it isn't room now.
So you're aware that you keep an eye on it?
Keep monitoring it, yeah.
Maybe recommend to the new owners that they don't cut the trees?
Yeah, I definitely would.
Because those are your best defense, you know, they're pretty good sized trees.
And you can't, because that will...
National Guard ground.
No leaves on the tree, so it's, of course. Sorry, I know the rock thing, what I do is, you're keen, and I talk to people for public interest. They had trouble with people hitting the fire hydrants, so they've got these huge boulders and put them right, I'm going to be fine with it.
But like I said, putting rocks on that, on the edge of the road, a fire truck's going to hit them and they're going to go down over the bike, and there's no way to do it.
How does a fire truck come through there, when there's a car coming the other way?
You gotta go real slow. Like I said, it's not making any better, but you, when you leave here, if you drive Eden Road, look at the two or three houses right here on Eden Road, there's one of them that's three feet from the house, and the person bought it, they were aware of it. Personally, I wouldn't buy a house that close to the road, but they elected to, and like, if they were going to build that house now, they wouldn't be allowed to do it.
I think it's just the hill or no idea.
We'll continue to monitor that, or target.
Seems that it's already been two cars over, car and a truck, collapse in two years is quite a, quite a history.
Further? Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Good luck with the sale.
See what happens when they find out, right? The problem we have is the attorney who came with us last time went badly.
Yeah.
I mean, he feels that we should let these people know what's going on, and you know, if there was a plan of any kind, we can say, "Oh, well, the town is working on it, they've thought of this, and it's not going to work, but maybe this will, maybe it'd be a better conversation if they..."
And like I said, the whole one-way thing, I, I'd be shocked if there was public support for it, for my parents, anytime we've looked at it, the public has been dead against it.
There was a lady here last time, I think she works for the town, people up over there, she was sitting over here, she said, "I take my dog to daycare and I go on that road, and it's really dangerous, because like you said, it could be two cars coming in different ways." She knew that road better than I do. Do any of you remember that conversation? She spoke, she spoke to you, Mike? She said, you know, that road shouldn't have to...
I don't think anybody here is doubting your situation, but I think Joe's relying on, we have that situation, and it's just so large of a, a thing to try to fix right now. You know, you can tell the people, you know, you don't know what's going to happen down the line with the town, but this, we are, we're not saying that it's not a dangerous situation, but right now, our hands are tied on something like that, I mean...
You could assure them that if the road can stabilize, we'll keep an eye on it, and if the road can stabilize more, we definitely have to do something about that, but where we're at right now, we don't have a immediate plan.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you let me look at it, because the last time we talked to you.
Yeah, I think we all around this table feel that it's just important, we just want you to know that we're not just pushing the side by. That's a large thing on our plate right now, with what we got ahead of us. I feel here, I get it, and I wish we could just say, "Hey, there's money, don't just do it." These are the, this is what makes these jobs hard for us, that we have to say no to some things.
Yep, thank, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck. So we're, I've got a schedule now, I'm looking forward to Joe, you guys maybe out there on the bridge, bridge project.
Bridge, oh, yes. Yeah, I definitely can do that, so, Kevin Thompson, you know, after our site visit, they patched that concrete in, we went with the antidote to help with the road, the rebar. Sam lashed the rebar off nice, looked really, really good, and then they put the enders in place, so the new concrete, they're actually, they have to do a little today. They were planning on pouring on Friday the additional, but the rain's going to hold that, but we're still on schedule, we're working with DOT, working with the campground, the bridge is being completely shut down on Wednesday. DOT's going to provide a couple of sign boards, we're renting an additional sign board to the one we all, going to move the campgrounds, blue signs from out here on Route 10, we are going to move them down into Winchester, off of, off of, coming off Westmore Village Road, campgrounds will be messaged into their campers. Waiting here back from the state, they're not responding, I mean, just go do it ourselves, but the state's portion of Westmore has a lot of branches hanging over that they're concerned about the campers, if the state doesn't do it, I'll go out and get that cleaned up, but we should be good for that traffic before on Wednesday. That was one of the important features, we're trying to get this bridge done on Sawyer's Crossing Road, have that done, throw it open back up, so we just don't have the resources to deal with them at the same time. Everything's going great with the, with the bridge, with the wooden deck in, I just met with Tracy before I came here, one of the biggest challenges is peeling up the old boards, and it wasn't a challenge at all, they actually called me up concerned that they peeled up too many and they weren't sure how many they're going to be able to get back down. So the bridge, that's open back up at 7:00, so we, we're going to have at least a 12 plane in the bridge open, but that probably will be done, have a schedule, but DOT's taking advantage of it being down, they are coming Monday to do some asphalt patchwork to the road there. I have a tree company coming in Friday to remove three hazardous pine trees while it's shut down, hazards to the bridge, and then if we have extra time in those two days, we may do some painting while it's shut down, so that is moving ahead well. The dam project has started, the trees have all been removed, just waiting for the green light now, fishing game, start pumping water, but that is heading in the right direction. We have a pre-construction meeting on Monday, Tuesday, we're in there and cut all the trees off, chip them, clean them up, actually looks really good, cleaning up all those dead trees that were aligned, the thick, the banking. So they're, they're doing well, it's just a matter of getting the green light, start pumping water, and as soon as, as soon as they get the water down, they're stabilized and low and see that slope where the trees are removed, and then it's the excavation of the existing dam, so they get down to the stable material and they can start rebuilding the new ones, so that is, that is going well. And then the other, we've had a lot going on. FEMA stuff is coming to him, we're still working on getting money reimbursed from the damages, but they went in and all state paved Tallahill Road, the one we lane, that was just damaged last year, so Tallahill is back to preconsist, pre-storm damage, the culverts have all been cleaned out. I am working with FEMA on some possible mitigation to do, I think it's approximately 2,500 feet of rippled swell on East Shore Road to help with some of the erosion control, and FEMA said there are some mitigation funds available, so I'm at the preliminary stage of working with the ESS to see what type of permitting would be required, and coming up with how much it's going to cost, and if FEMA will approve, but it sounds to be optimistic.
Bucket truck up and running?
It is.
Working out the way you know?
Yes, absolutely, it comes, it's quite helpful. Gets used, we use it all the time when we're out cutting brush, but it gets used quite as well when you get a call of a tree hanging over, stuff at the bridge, stuff at the cemetery, flag, flag hole, it gets used quite a bit. It's a nice, it's a nice truck.
Where'd we get that, I didn't hear from you.
Well, I bought that off a municipal, I'm comfortable with pounding it, so. We bought it for a fraction, what it's probably worth right now, we're pretty fortunate, we pre-tucked a combine.
It's like a line truck looking like?
Yeah, it's a Ford, 450, I think, so it's a kind of duty truck, but like we fill it out in 37, what is that?
Oh, that can come in.
So yeah, that does come quite a bit. So yeah, paving, we continue all over Hill Road, almost ready for painted, we finished all the drainage pipes up there, we have a little bit of prep, and then hopefully we're going to be starting here on public Hill Road, getting that ready to paint, probably not too late, so.
Can we take the copper Hill Road all the way up to the end of what's been improved?
So the plan is going up to the top of the hill, as we know, we have a property owner that's not cooperating, I've been communicating with the pounds, surveyor, I want them to go in and do an actual survey, so I know exactly what the property boundaries are before I cut any of those trees, the other property owners that cooperate, we're going to go in there, cut a bunch of trees, add drainage, widen, so basically the steep portion of the hill where it levels up the top will be painted. I want it wider than it is now, with the one property owner that's not cooperating. The tax map shows we have 40 or 50 feet right away through there, I don't trust Adam enough to start cutting trees, so I sent a bunch of information to the surveyor, waiting here back from the surveyor, we need to pay him, we'll have to do a full survey to make sure where the boundaries are, how it'll be, so, because last thing I want to do is cut trees that aren't on the right way up there.
Can we take that all the way to Woodland Heights, so we can come up with a budget to bring that all the way through?
Where's Woodland Heights at?
Oliver Hill Road.
Oh, you're talking Oliver Hill, I was talking about Colley.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I misheard you, sorry.
No, I can work on that, I can work on that, so Oliver Hill is going to be paved to where the, becomes Class 6.
So we don't have any survey issues there?
No, the survey issue's up on Colley. We're paving up to the very top portion of the steep column of Oliver Hill, and the property owner up at the top, not cooperating as far as, is widening, you know, so that's where I'm going to do surveying. Oliver Hill Road is not, no issues, we're paving once they, changed out all the drainage pipes to the class, the drainage swales are, are reestablished, the house is now grading before they come to paint it, but if you're interested in looking at a number, continue the road on, I mean, I would work on that, not knowing what's up there for material as far as ledge.
There could be definitely some big boulders.
So yeah, big boulders, not, not a new jackhammer and then with a big excavator, but if you get ledge, you're going to be blasting, there's some added expenses, but I'd probably go walking, but the Class 6 portion is in really good shape. The woman rebuilt it in 2020, then it got washed out in 2021, she's since rebuilt it again, so up to the top is in really good shape, just where it appears off, they're going on Class 6. So measurements roughly what it is in the water, to see how much, how much grades change up there.
We should have, the distance should be measurable on the GIP.
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Little, little test work.
So like I said, we could come up with a, a rock estimate of what it's going to cost, and have to see what the elevations are like up there as far as, and then, without having test bits for materials, it could be a little bit difficult, but maybe be able to access it from the other side, get some test bits, and having the free volumes, if they, if they could 3D world base for apple, brush for apple, and then in the future, but it's, it's definitely cool.
And with regard to Sawyer's Crossing Road, in anticipation of the cameras coming in, what, what would the state do if we proactively put our own sign to, just to make people aware that A, there is a covered bridge coming, you saw it when you did the work there, and then B, that there are finable offenses?
I think, I mean, definitely, I think they would be open to cameras and finable offenses. They recently added a sign, I was told, I haven't seen it, but they went out and did their survey, which we requested, they added a sign, I think if we had signs we wanted to put up, we'd have to ask for authorization from, and I don't, I don't see it being an issue, but the one thing I caution, like I said, if people see the bridge and look at their truck and say, "I think I can fit through," a traffic sign, I'm not going to stop it, I don't want to stop people.
You're, you're on camera?
Yeah, yeah.
Once the legislation gives this opportunity, you can just find it.
Yeah, and then civil, like, my plan is when this project is completed, I'm going to reach out to an insurance company or a trucking company to hit it, and, and provide them with what the cost was, and if there's an issue, we're going to have to take it, go out to civil court. But wait, it would be a little bit of an eyesore, but the way to stop people from the bridges, you see, I've seen them before, people put up angle steel going across the top of the bridge, and the bridge is not going to get hit in. I don't know how the state would feel about that, like, you've seen them before.
Away from the bridge, so they're like this way, right? Just the perfect height?
Yep.
And they cut right in and cut some...
You're going to hit that before you hit the covered bridge, and it won't get hit.
True, there's a lot of them out there.
The other thing, the bridge gets itself, there are people in cell phones, and when they come off, they cut the corners short, and they hit that outside wall, don't distract the drive, you know, one specific case, if it was on a cell phone, one of them decided that, well, as far as the over height goes, we put those beams up, I don't, we're looking at something that's a little bit cosmetic, but it would be a little bit of an eyesore, but it would stop the bridge from getting hit. Although, the people that live on Sawyer's Crossing Road, you got the people that are all upset that the road's being closed, but the people that live on Sawyer's Crossing Road, they don't want to see that bridge ever opened up again, so peaceful and tranquil down there right now.
Dancing in the street?
So yeah, they're out walking, saying, "This is great, don't open it back up." Yeah, so as of this time next week, monitoring something happening, that bridge should be, the decking should be done, all the cosmetic repairs should be fixed, and if I can, we're a little short on staff right now, but if I can swing it, we're still, they're done in those Monday, Tuesday days, we have slated for it to be closed, we're going to do some painting for the gate one, it's, like, the bridge started in downtime, we've been doing some painting for the guardrails and the cable under the problem, and I've painted that, looking at downtime, I think we can do most of that with the lift, the big bridges for the sides, we have to contract that.
And as far as extending the sidewalk across the river, have we had a chance to consider it?
We've had, we've had some talks about it, and it's going to be, it's going to be a funding issue, at that, at the beginning of the year, just to see what kind of wave can sustain.
Would it be a separate bridge, or would it be that on today?
I don't know, the engineers think that those posts could handle the additional wave, I think it possibly could be just off the side, but I don't know, the aluminum pipe, it doesn't have to be anything that large, but the frame of the bridge can handle it, but I think it would take some engineering work to see if that's feasible. Imagine a woman, no, it looks expensive, but a woman would be able to light us, and who limited the bicycles and like no horse, or even that, and I think the bridge would hold up, definitely takes some engineering. That would be the cheaper, that would be the choi, see, but Canada's has, it's bridged everywhere, at least large spans, mobile bridges crossing areas, and I've seen just that, like a aluminum cage on the side of a, a bridge that went wide away, and it was hanging off the side of the bridge.
And they're covered?
Not, not for the weather. Not for the weather. So what I, like I said, I would do, take some engineering piece and look at it, a whole separate bridge would be, would be rather expensive, but high enough for rail trails, the rail trail gets more access and more growth, it's something that would be doing that, it'd be nice back down there.
Thank you. Good. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. I'll come back to the board, I did make a change order on this bridge, the bridge had galvanized, and when it was bid, they bid for galvanized fasteners, I upgraded it to stainless steel fasteners, because a lot of the galvanized fasteners failed, it broke failed, it broke off, so it's going to be, going to be a bit more money, three, four thousand dollars for the stainless hardware, but that is what I'm, but I will come back to field data, bridge C I P. I just didn't, we're spending all this money, anyone have galvanized fasteners, we need a week's worth. All the current bridges have galvanized on them, crew has been using stainless when they break it, but they're bad, so that's what we want. Thank you.
Good, thanks, Jim. Alice Romanek, Carpenter Home Lease Extension. How things at Honeybee Owl?
They're going. I'm listening for hours. I have this worry of people, I won't read the whole thing, but I just, I mean, I need this one. My picture stops. This is just kind of like a written proposal for us. Do you want to have it? I think we little parts of it. So the board directors and I, after meeting with Michael and Adam, decided we'd like to ask for a twenty year lease of the garden home. To, I guess, when we've been in twenty year leases, so we'd like to jump into a twenty year lease with a review every five years only for the, the grant aspect, just to give us a little more opportunity with some larger grants, so that we can have.
We, we obviously haven't had an opportunity to read this, but instead of a twenty year, would you consider a five year with three five year options?
The only reason we were considering a twenty year was because of the opportunities for grant funding to, for both the town and us to help the building. That's our, that's our main, our end goal, is the building needs a lot of work. You guys have been subsidizing us this, this whole time, and we're, we're almost at that point. According to our, our month schedule, we'll be at the three thousand dollars a month starting in January, and that's what we're proposing to hit that mark. And so I went into the Northern Borders grants, I've looked into community block.
Development Finance Authority?
The, the C D F A is the beginning of the community block grant. So just some larger options, just because, I mean, as you guys know, like the, the building needs a deeper, fun part of it, and there's, it's old, it's an old building, old building, some of the old building problems. And we have some, some things we would love to do to make it so we, so our classrooms can flow a little better, so we can hit, you know, a little more capacity, so we can give, increase our quality. So we, when I'm looking to these grants, I can, I can apply to them, I can apply to Northern Borders as a nonprofit, but they want to see that I'm either purchasing or I have at least a twenty year lease. Then the community block grant would be, if they recommend you start a planning grant anyway, which is what we were suggesting, it's a twenty five thousand dollar planning grant that the town would apply for, and it's the C D F A, then it leads into a community block grant, which can be up to five hundred thousand dollars with a match, we have kind of always match it, which we are willing to go and work for that. But the twenty five thousand would be a feasibility study, it could be an energy audit, it could include all of that, just to see if a project is viable to do in that building, and, but yeah, that comes down to a twenty year also, at least a twenty year we're purchasing. A lot of what we're running into is that they want us to be purchasing a property versus renting, to do any, you know, renovation related money. And I have Timken offer up to a hundred thousand dollars, he just told me I couldn't use it for, for anything in a rented building. I could purchase things with it, but not renovating the building. So yeah, that was, that was where the twenty years came from, which is just because that, that's the cutoff for most of these larger grants. Yeah. So that's what we're, we're proposing, is that it would help us with the deteriorating roof, something to help us with the yard drainage, there's been a lot of animal damage to the basement windows and the foundation. We've been catching scents quite often, these angels have been catching scents quite often. The heating system needs some love, there's a couple rooms throughout the building that, like the heat wrangling will work, but doesn't work with it. We need to fix up some of the outdoor lighting, there's a bird infested one of them. And, you know, there's just, there's just things, and we want, we want to be there, we love it up there, the kids love it, we've been talking with the Conservation Commission about working on the nature trails out back. You know, we had a volunteer work day the other day, we had parents come and help us put in a little fence, and they came and cleaned up the gardens, and they, someone put up a railing on the back porch, and, you know, we cleaned out some of the woods, and the, the kids and their families just love being there, and we, we want to stay there, so. That was, that was around.
Yeah, by the way, Alice has kind of mentioned, but we're getting to the point where the rent is basically going to cover all the usage costs, which is great, but she's also saying, hey, this, you know, this is a hundred plus year old building, it's tired, it needs some improvements. Is the town going to pay for that? Is she going to pay for that? So that, that's why we're looking at the longer term lease, as, gives us options of maybe neither of us, maybe we can get a big grant that will help do a lot of improvements. So that's, that's a real driver for it, and obviously gives her a little more stability. We all know we made these one year deals, because once you started, here, we started to talk about the next one. So I think longer, in some ways, is definitely better, and that's where we came to the, you know, what's the, what's the, what's the shortest term that'll be long enough, and it seemed like this is where we came to, so.
And there would still be the options to put either of us to grab out, but in the lease currently, there's, there's a ninety day clause. There's quick, quick, hey, no, we're done, you know, but I don't, I don't want to.
As of right now, have we put any, the town's put any money into that building since she's been there? Have we done anything?
Yeah, Mike, Mike's done a lot of, a lot of work up there, but it's not been the huge, not been the roof level, it's like taking out a wall here and there, fixing the floor.
So are you saying that we're already doing everything here that she's asking? We're doing the general maintenance? We, are we looking at fixing heat, do we do that now?
But I, I did, I haven't followed up with Mike yet. There was, I called the guy, service guy? I don't know if he ever came back with the park for, we don't need heat in that room right now, but, but he did call the guy.
No, what I'm trying to find out is, do we, since you've been there, has the town been doing these things that you got here, the heating?
Yeah, that's in the original lease, it's all of that.
Yeah, so this isn't being added on, this is continuing.
But we're, we're in mainly break fix mode. Breaks, and it becomes an emergency, then we fix it, I think she's looking to try to get ahead of some of that stuff partly, and just do some more things to make it work for her uses.
So yeah, we, we, yeah, any time there are complications or anything, but most likely the team here.
So these grants that gave you, they really want to see twenty year, ten wouldn't help or nothing like that? It has to be at least twenty years?
At least twenty years. The community block grant, they definitely told me that they wanted to see that, I believe it was that the building had to be used for childcare for twenty years. I'm not one hundred percent positive that I can, for me necessarily, but that was the intention, it was that it had to be twenty years. And then Northern Borders was definitely twenty. They originally told me ten, one of the guys thought it was ten, and now they double check it.
If you walked away with the twenty year lease, how confident do you feel that you would get these grants?
Pretty confident.
You're pretty confident?
Yeah.
So you're, so this is the only thing that might be able to be back? It's not having just the lease, there's no other big issues that came up that to get these grants?
No.
I think one of the ways to look at it, two things is, the guarantee is shbokh.
Yes, that is true.
If you're looking for a guarantee, the guarantee is shbokh without it. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, it's optimism, that's what's most amazing about Alice, is her eternal love of optimism. But if, without any kind of a guarantee, has no chance of any of this. That's, that's, that's a given.
I was trying to get a gist of what it changed, getting these grants.
I mean, they're, they're federal level.
And you know, we're, we're going to make a large commitment here, so I was just wondering what our chances to make this commitment, you know?
They are, they are federal level grants, they are harder to get, teamed up with the municipality makes it easier. I have the opportunity to potentially go through the county also, I haven't met them there yet, we can't so recently. So that with, some of these bigger grants, municipalities have higher, a higher option, or they are the only option for applying for it. Yeah, then I would work on, I would work on the matching part. That's where, like, I wanted to, with Timken, I could potentially push them. They said, they said that they wanted to only see a first purchasing, but I could, you know, if I could show them that we're on a twenty year lease, they might give me the hundred thousand dollars to match. C N S is known for giving big amounts. Medic said that they would help fund it if they needed to, the, the match, if they needed to come up with that, so. I mean, that's, what I'm asking is to start at least with the, the planning grants, which is, we would apply for in January if we did this, right, Jan, roughly? It's a rolling admissions, January to June.
Absolutely, some of the pre-escalation.
Yeah. So that would even, that would, you know, determine if it's even a viable project to do anything that you're thinking, but.
So in your, every five year review, what do you anticipate with the review in five year?
Mostly just like expenses for, for you guys, for us, and just, I mean, I guess it could be, it could be like whether we leave it or not. But my, my thought was just to go over, because I mean, costs are going to change, like they change all the time, who knows what the economies and like I should have, so I figured we could do a check in, who knows, maybe we do an energy audit, and we, this grant works out, and we streamline heating, I don't know, and it lowers your grasses costs, and then maybe we can say, okay, so this money, the, the extra money, I'm not asking for it in production necessarily, but the extra money can be put into a fund to continue maintaining it, but if there's, who knows? But just a check in.
If you're asking for a twenty year lease, you, you really need to understand from our perspective, that's a pretty significant commitment for us to make, particularly when the, in a lease like this, it would be common for what's referred to as a triple net lease, which essentially means you cover all the costs.
Yeah.
And in this case, we're, we're being asked to, to cover fuel, electricity, and whatever other utilities are needed. You're, you're projecting from January of twenty five through May of twenty, of forty four, that the rental rate will be three thousand dollars a month, which I personally, I couldn't, I couldn't loop myself in the, never mind someone else, and justify it, so I, I would just like to see some more information provided on how that would be, how this would come together. I'd also like to see the language that specifies, and Michael can provide this, that it has to be a twenty year lease, it can't be five with multiple five year options, and your option, that type of thing, so that, so we have a full understanding of it. I think I agree with, with Jim, if this is not pushed back from the standpoint that we don't like what you're doing, and we don't think you're doing a great job, it's just trying to be able to justify a sign of a twenty year lease when, when there's a number of variables that are at play. And ideally, I think we should identify upfront what, what expenses are anticipated by the landlord, us, the town, and by you, so that it's, it's not, well, we're going to apply for this grant, and, and you're going to apply for that grant, and you get it, so you do the roof, we get it, we'll do the roof. We, I think we've just got to iron it out a little bit more.
I know, at least like the, the community block grants, if, like, if the town is applying on your, your ends, it would be for your building, basically. Like, it wouldn't be necessarily for me, but again, it is free money, but it's free money, it's grant money.
But also, but also there'd be some kind of stipulation that, you know, the first idea is if grants, she doesn't press on the grants and nothing happens, that that's a way that we move us from a twenty year lease, so if we don't see any actions on the grant, always have a way in the language to do something like that, is that possible? But I agree with Billy too, I think there's a lot of open ends here that we're not sure, like, like you said, the responsibility of us, responsibility of hers, and you can be a little more clear about it, and definitely that many years are the worst there, I agree.
I would just go based on our past, that was what I was saying, was the, the cost and everything based on our past, our past agreements.
Well, it's helpful to know that you've been working with Adam and Mike, so that they're, they're all in the, the loop together with you, because this will come together. It, it's a lot to ask of you as an individual and your board, because so, so much of this was experiment.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we took a flyer on you, you took a flyer on the town, and it's great to see that it's working.
It's working. We have, I put it in here, we have forty eight kids currently, and the only reason we haven't hit the sixty was because, like, some of the birds, it's just too much to, yeah, they say you can put twenty kids in there, but you put twenty kids in there, you're like, whoa. So without some, some law adjustments potentially, but we can't really hit our full capacity, but, I mean, we have, there's thirty four sponsored families currently, I don't have those forty eight. Trying to keep it as many, as many sponsored families, we can, with the school changing and everything in the next few years, okay, we, we're doing a good thing, being in this facility. So we just need to.
One of the comments you made was that maybe in five years, you wouldn't want to do it, or maybe the model's not working. So with, with any of the grants or any of the forgivable loans, are they tied, are they going to be tied to that building being utilized for childcare, so, and then if they are, and you walked away, who, who's on the hook for that?
Yeah, I would probably, I don't, I don't want to. The whole, like, but half the reason we became, yeah, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I would have to find out more. I would assume it would probably fall back on, on the, whoever applied to the grant, or who might.
Well, the other piece where it's now a registered nonprofit is it's, the entity is designed to not, you know, not to be up to Alice's whim, so, you know, so it's, she goes, win the lottery, retire tomorrow, and Honeybee Owl, or whatever the, with the official name is, but Children's Center would continue, so it's, that gives security too, it's not up to just, she decides she doesn't want to do childcare anymore, it closes up. Ideally with the board, it's designed to have more stick to it, but that is a good question, if, you know, it goes out of business next year, are we then going to have to pay back the million dollars coming into the building? It's a good question.
Yeah. But yeah, I, the part, I mean, the main push for becoming a nonprofit was to get us more money, and more grants and things, and I've been able to get like little ones here and there, but nothing, nothing substantial enough to help us with the building.
And you say little ones, so how little?
I, I mean, like, they're mostly just estate, so it's, they're, I think, left over COVID money, and we did get Rotary, the Elm City Rotary, we got a little grant of sixteen hundred dollars to do, or not, eleven hundred, eleven hundred, for purchasing some backpacks and my precious stuff. So I, I haven't gone for too many, because the things that we need are, are bigger at this point, so I am working on the Opportunities to Succeed Grant currently, we, we completed a business optimization, that's what they call it, course through the state, that was through Childcare Accelerate, and that was an eight week course, we did that, and we're called back for twenty five thousand, and I'm actually going to be using some of it for replacing the ramp, because we took out the, we had a volunteer day, they took out the ramp, because it was just a treppenler, and all the boards were lifting up, so we're going to utilize some of that money to replace the ramp, to replace the washers and dryers, yeah, those things.
Those things.
Yeah.
Keep going at it, no?
We're, I keep going at it, and this is just what I do.
Good for you.
Crazy.
Right. We might just need a few more questions answered, maybe in some time, right?
Do some more questioning, we just wanted to get an initial.
Yeah, maybe we can do some, yeah, questions again, like that, we would like to answer.
Eight questions, boy. I was trying.
We appreciate what you're doing, your answers.
Good job.
Thanks.
Tom's lucky to have you.
I think so.
Should be proud.
I am.
We'll try to work with you.
We've been to Travis for a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Code Enforcement Officer Mike Jasmine, Green Hall, Conover.
How about your implementation?
All right, so you guys, um, got the, the memos, the bid, bid results, three bids, there's really only one bid that, you know, we became close to fitting the budget, a little higher than, than I, I hope, still within budget, not a problem. Um, I did, um, I normally with found buildings, you know, I prefer and go for metal roof whenever I can, and this one I'm going to backtrack on a little bit, and I'm going to pull the eight or nine thousand dollar upgrade, whatever it was, out of the, out of the bid for metal, because, um, it's still a little wonky, and the next thing I would want to do of any major consequence, again, would be going back to the foundation, which is what I wanted to do before. And I don't want to do that with a metal roof, because I may damage the roof where the shingles are up, more likely to flex. And the reality of it is, by the time we get to getting to that, where they get the money and the rest, I think there's a fair chance that the roof would probably be needing, be revending at any point, in which time I can, with the metal roof and the rest, deal with it from that perspective, at that time in history. So, I put fifteen percent on contingency versus the normal ten, because everything else is going up, so I figured I'd call my contingency as well. And that brought us to the, to the, um, not too steep price of another five change.
Can construction overlaying the snow load if it's not metal?
Yeah, I, I believe so, the engineer, um, Ted Fellows is good with it, and we're going to have all nice new in there, yeah, it should be fun, it should be fun, it's valid point, I believe it should be fun. Yeah, I feel good about that. We're going to find out in the next couple of weeks, I'll rip some plaster off that thing, before we even open the roof, roof up, we're going to rip, I'm going to rip plaster off the first footer, saw of it, um, make sure the top plates and the studs are in condition, I think they're in, um, because if they're not, we're going to have to have a different discussion. But I'm not going to rip the roof off, and then find out then, so, you know, make sure it's in decent shape before we take the roof off, best as we can. It'll be a trust roof, a trust roof. With, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to call it an attic style, only because I'm, I wanted to, to design the trust as much open in the middle as possible, only to make, if anyone asks me for it for any reason, just to make their lives better and safer, that's all.
Worth going.
I've done enough of them that no one cared about me, so I couldn't possibly do that for somebody else. Um, and it's going to be, uh, they're going to be able to start work sometime in August, so it fits the schedule, but I don't, it shouldn't take a whole lot of time anyway.
What are they figuring, what are they figuring for a time frame?
They didn't really, I, they didn't, they didn't tell me, they're going to, they're not going to finish till they start. Um, they were the company, they did do the doorwork originally, and they just finished, um, the Old County Courthouse, they were the primary contractor of the Old County Courthouse project. Um, I know, uh, Mike Cetravick, who we work with, and know, he's really well, spoke highly of them, I know them personally, and I find him incredibly upright, well, not that he's straightforward, he would be, so I'm feeling pretty good that we have an issue and we're able to work it out, uh, recommend issue.
What's up there now, Mike, on the roof right now?
What's up there now?
Yeah, what material, is it shingles?
It's shingles, it's, uh, rough pine boards, and also two by eight, six rafters, one by struts-ish. Um, some of them are physically broken.
So you're going to strip all that off, even the pine board?
The pine board, the rafters, everything, there will be nothing up there.
Nothing.
Open to the sky. Um, same thing we did on Town Hall. The difference is, is Town Hall we did a hollowed shot, this will probably be more third to third than the third, um, to help keep the building from splaining. And originally I wanted to hang on to the gable ends, and once we go to contract and talk about it, I'm going to try to make that pitch again, uh, because of the way it's designed, but if they feel that it's going to be better and easier for them, and end up with the same structure to not see the gable ends, then I don't know, we won't say, but because it's blue and framed and the rest of it, I'm just not great with that detail, with cutting it and then, and then having a hinge, and I'm just not doing great about it. I'll look at it.
I hope we don't run into where the hybrid.
We will.
Although it would solve the problem.
It will.
We don't have that.
Will, and you still have.
No one does.
Yes, yes, you got to do next to us in town.
But no, but seriously.
I know.
If that, if that happened.
But seriously, Chris, that's why I'm going to cut first and all of this, and that, before we, we can have a really good idea of what we're getting into before we get into it, best we can.
What do you want to add to their price or contingents?
I added fifteen percent, so it went from, uh.
Hundred and five?
Yeah, it went from, and I did that by way of markup versus.
Don't think you added it.
Yeah, it was eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred, eleven dollars, eighty-nine cents, with fifteen percent markup, it goes to a hundred and five by forty-three forty.
Oh, here it says ninety nine.
I was wondering for that, those were the three beds, and this is, this is the amount she asked me for.
And we bet, and we bet, we bet they wouldn't do the math.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, yeah, because I mean, the bids were just like wild. And it was even, I was like, we got to begin with, so.
I like that lower one, the, the number three.
Yeah, but if I want those shingles, you'd be upset, but fortunately.
It's a little more than.
Yeah, yeah, I, I felt bad for the guy, but I, I mean, I know for him that was probably just a really quick number, you know, for a night pool.
And really, that's why I was the question, who would care if it's snow load?
Yeah, 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 I, I exactly answered that, yes, so.
Who cares if it's leaf load?
Because it's not doing it now. So yeah, I mean, I think, I think that's where we are, I'm feeling, I mean, I know that's where we're hitting that a couple, three different times, and, um, yeah, so.
So one oh six? One oh six?
Sure.
Want to come in on your.
I want to come in, I want to come in, almost twenty grand under, yeah, and I still think we, you know, we should, it should be closer to ninety, ninety one, but we don't know how this goes.
So my understanding before I, should have put my decision up there, is that you're going to pull off some more stuff to make sure, before we even stop this project.
That's right, so the.
You're going to do a little more research and make sure we don't.
Right, so where the, where the ceiling meets the wall, upstairs now.
Got it.
We're going to take a foot to a foot and a half, a plaster mat off, I'm going to expose the top plate and the studs, and look at their condition. And if they seem to be in fair condition, like we expect them to be, yeah, off we go.
Sure.
If they're drunk, you got to stop, and you got to figure out what we're looking at, and probably pull off more, and not end up in, in a spot where we're placing weather, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't ever rip that roof off unless we know what we knew.
Sure.
Town Hall, we had the luxury of that space, was a dump, we knew what we had, we could see it in, in, we could see, around your ears, you could see that, um, which made solving it a lot easier too, um, but this building, it was.
I went up there, I saw it, and I know exactly what you're talking about.
Back, back, back in the old days, and every building, every building was a different building, if you could still see the wood, and you were poor, and poor recovery, that's why Town Hall looks that way, nowadays, of course, they pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to see the wood.
Yeah, that's one of my main concerns.
I never was a big fan of this whole project in the first place, but, I mean, where it looks like there's a lot of people out, so I'm not going to hold anything back, so I'll make a motion. Yes, right.
To a hundred and six.
To a hundred and six, right.
Motion made, seconded, authorize expenditure to a hundred and six thousand for the Grange Hall repairs. Grange Drive, Hall Capital Reserve Fund, authorize town administrator to sign contract documents with Griffin Construction. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Michael. Hey, Mike, can I just ask you a question while you're here, what's going on with the fire station, um, did the guy have a come yet, to, to, are, are anything new with the water?
Nope, I did, I did, I did reach out to, um, the contractor for the, um, split units, because they want, like, any of them to take the head that's in the fire station out, the line set out, so we can pass the hole, then when we pass the hole, then they can drill a new wall, and when they put the new line set in, what we're going to have them do is put a drip loop in it, so when you look at a new service entry cable like that, or I ain't done even a phenomenal, right, and look at, and that cable comes off the telephone, goes into the house, it's got a loop. The purpose of that loop is to collect rain, the rain in the water, get the bottom loop, and then it drip, so we're going to do the same thing with that line set, is to create a hook in it, so that it'll drip and not follow as much, uh, in, have the potential to follow it in, and, um, but working with him, and I reached out to Aho about putting, uh, getting a number on, um, gutters, and they're expecting to call me back in the second.
And what about the window?
Haven't done anything with the window yet.
How would you do that, you'd have someone come in and take that window out and redo it, because that water came in.
I'll probably do that, but, we'll see, we'll see what we can do to the whole thing, but.
Yeah, because I went there in my last hands on, and everything was wet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's covered, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, um, yeah, so, yes, still a little, still getting it done.
Great. I'd just like to be kept in the loop with that, if you don't mind.
I would, I would, I would, ask the way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we good?
Moving on to new business, Fire Station Committee Discussion.
Did you bring your list, Michael?
I thought you said you didn't want to talk about names.
Right, I did, okay, so, uh, if, what I did, we talked before about putting a committee together that would, would help us to bring the fire station to fruition, so I provided a list of names to Michael, and he's reviewed them, there's thirteen or fourteen names on there, and then uh, what, what would our next step be, maybe these guys need to know the names, and you email it to them?
Yep.
The list, and then maybe coordinate through you, if there's any changes.
I don't think we want a fourteen person committee, right?
No, but I didn't, I didn't view it as a fourteen person executive committee, it, my thought was that we, we'd never have enough people involved, and what Wally used to tell us, when Wally used to come, is you got to market, you got to market, you got to market, so my thought was that with this group of people, five or so, an outnumbered, would be the executive committee, and then the balance would, would be people that would work on marketing or gathering data, and then bringing it forward to, to the executive committee. There's some people that are very good at LinkedIn, Facebook, and all of these things, and I'm certainly not one of them, but we want to have people like that that would, would make sure that we're publicizing to the best we can.
Is this, we went talking about for the new fire station, meaning, let's get, give us some ideas and how we can move on with it, right? Yeah.
I think the big thing to make clear is, what, what are we asking them to look at, are we asking them to start from ground zero, and, or are we saying, just, yeah, I just think it's important to make it clear.
I think I'd like to see them bring back some options, everything's like, like, don't do the new fire station for five years, and take our money and we upgrade what we got, or different options, different ideas to attack this, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see us, you know, give us some options, you know, investigate what everybody brought up, the Cottles School, and investigate all different ways that we could choose, right, than just push the one.
Well, yeah, but in terms of the Cottles School or Wilcox School, we don't, and they're not coming to us any, so, but in terms of, what Bill and Sly are saying, everything should be on the table.
Right.
So there's, there's people that think we need two stations, there's people that think we need three stations, there's people that think it should go where it is, there's people that think it should be in Swansea Center, or it should be more towards East or whatever, and they're, well, there, there is, and, and all of that has to be, has to be answered, but if we don't need it, then we got to close, so what, what, but, but that's what I'm, I agree with Sly, I think everything is on the table. I would like to see us do a tour of the West Malan Station, uh, because that's one that did get passed, and, and it may very well satisfy our, our needs.
Great ideas.
We had, we had a location that we discussed, and we'll bring up public because if somebody else owns a property, but I think we, we would want them to look at, at that as well, because it's, it's a property that, that we thought made sense at the time, it just didn't work, but yeah, I think everything's beyond that.
When would you want them to ever report back?
I think that ideally by October.
Well, we keep that together, right, it's in the V I, right?
Well, yeah, because then we'd have to roll out with public hearings and, and all, and be ready for a warrant.
So, in other words, move fast up and down, right?
Yeah, or maybe they get into it far enough, and they realize we can't make that deadline, we can't make the twenty-five warrant, but we could make the twenty-six one, but doesn't mean the work wasn't effective, just see, see how it rolls.
And how does that work though, like, they, they would do their own meetings, something like that, then they would come to us and sit in front of us and explain to what they.
Well, one of us might be, might be on the committee, just like we are, C I P C, uh, E D A, planning board, I don't know if that's a possibility.
Sly would love that.
You would, right?
Sly would love that, I know.
I'm on E D A, he's on C I P C, what are you doing?
I got to get eggs. I love it, Billy, I think that's fantastic that you moved on that, like, uh. It's awesome. We did twelve, need it, can you just, I.
We've got people that can work on it.
And you got to get some smart people there, this list that you came up with, how did you do that?
Just by.
People that you know, that you wrote there, and we, we moved where you went yourself.
No, I'll watch anyways.
And you actually got all these people on board that they would go.
I'm only chairing when they come with, because I don't, I don't want to pre, have you guys say no, we don't want that person.
Oh, so we don't even know if we're going to get yeses out of the five on the fourteen, right?
We'll, we'll get yeses.
We will.
We will. We will, there, there are people that want to participate.
That's awesome, that's great.
I'm just, I'm not a, I'm not a, but I just don't know how you want to proceed, normally we would close for creating a committee, let us know if you want to join, and then we weigh them when they come in, so it's just a little different approach.
Just to be proactive.
Right, so that's why I don't know, that's why I'm unclear on what our next step is.
I think the next step would be for these guys to see the list, and I can't send it, so.
Right.
Uploads, that we're putting together a committee, and proactively send invites to these people who identify.
Sure.
Well, you guys have to agree. You know, I can't kick anybody off the list, I just say, we're putting together a committee, are you interested? So, and then we might get somebody from the outside, that, you know, who is always on their own, that has some really good input, you know, that's not, that's.
Mike, why are you, um, it seems to me like it's not good to have a live committee?
Correct.
Is it, why is that?
It's not. Well, so if you have fourteen people, you need seven or eight to be there to be at work, and every decision, everyone has to go around their own, the Keene City Council, they don't do it, they don't make any decisions after fifteen people sitting at the table, and they have all some committees of five of them, and they make their recommendations, then the big.
You don't want us to put off that.
Which it kind of sounds like it's what those, suggestion. I find usually larger committees tend to get bought down, whereas smaller groups, three, five, maybe seven.
Well, that's where I was saying, we would select from the, from the group, an executive committee, and then work, work the others to help us.
They're taking their own notes.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night, you going on vacation?
Yeah.
I'm heading to the school, it's class time. The Realtors do give an award.
Oh, really, you get one?
I don't get it.
Grab mine.
I will. Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Agreement Update with Swansea Ave Memorial Park. Anything else?
As we're approaching, approaching closing up the screen, I want some updated, basically, observations.
So I guess it's in over here, that has Governor and Council approval?
I'll make that motion, that's a good.
Alright, motion made, and I'll second, authorize town administrator to sign grant agreement documents related to the Land and Water Council Fund grant for improvements to West Swansea Ave and Memorial Park, all in favor, say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Requested expenditure, Town Hall postage meter.
So it is, it is approved, problematic, apples to apples, quotes thus far from different companies, so I don't know if we're okay, maybe just re-upend the Pitney bone goes at a lease within budgeted funds, or if you want me to, uh, continue to shop around, we want to make sure if we're looking at, because the, the price difference is like seven times, unless there's, these are the same, the same machines, which they confirm, um, so it's just.
You want to go another week or so?
So I feel like the problem is, I think the postage meter runs out of.
Postage.
Well, it's one of the postings, it's like a song. Well, it's not a posting, it's like a software update that you can't do or something, so... If you're comfortable letting me go forward, and I can report back, I don't think it's going to, it's not, it's not going to break the budget.
So the motion would be to authorize you?
Well, it'd be to sign, it'd be to sign in these spaces, every good lease option, land, set up as a purchase, but...
Are you happy with that?
Yeah, I understand it, and I am happy with that, I don't...
I'm not happy with the...
I know, but I get it.
Just another thing for you to do.
Yeah.
So what are you doing now?
So you can read, make that motion?
Just to sign, to sign a new lease, we can go, or...
To authorize the town administrator to enter a lease purchase.
I can leave it there, I think that's where we're going to go, but you can not include that.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye, the ayes have it. Good luck with that. Requested expenditure for fire station three expenses for twenty twenty-three addition. We're looking for thirty-six thousand, six twenty-five, sixty-six, Cat's Reserve Fire Station stuff.
It's, that for, what is that, Mike?
It's for the addition we did last year.
We need to do more.
No, it's, it's accounting, yeah, when the bills came in.
Oh, okay.
I thought it had been charged in the operating budget last year, but I think it has been flooding and overage, so... Basically, to clean up, clean up the books for the Cat's.
I'll meet that motion, just wait.
Right, motion made, and I'll second. To authorize the expenditure of the thirty-six thousand, six twenty-five, sixty-six from the Fire Station's Capital Reserve Fund for twenty twenty-three expenses related to the Fire Station three addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it, thank you. The old business, administrative update, correspondence, public input. More bite of the apple, Mark? What are you doing here?
Just observing. He survived, yeah.
No upcoming agenda items, except for...
Well, we're going to talk about, I put it in here, Serge Crossing, that's a lady, I put it in here. Next meetings, residents of Serge Crossing, we're a little bit too approached the border now, as your speed is.
And do we have any, uh, public...
Uh, just...
Joe wanted to do one next meeting, so...
I'm going to do that, one break, yeah. So one break.
Yes, we have one, not ours.